Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started even though we are starting one minute early. That means we get out earlier. Anyway, we do have a form, one, two. That's correct. And if we could have an indication.
Father, thank you for the day that you've given us. We thank you for this opportunity in the appointed hour that we come together to discuss the business of the district. We just ask that you guide and direct us, help us make wise decisions, Father, and just go before us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we'll move on. The primary purpose as you know, that I have is to go over the budget. And we will be doing that shortly. We have a couple of things to go over and we'll start with the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Just a few pieces I want to put on your radar. The Granville Ed Foundation has reached out to us. Their ticket sales are a little low this year for picking a raffle. And that funding in large part is still for us. So if you're interested in participating, they asked that I pass that along since we were having a meeting tonight. Fifty dollars a piece, but really nice things. We have confirmed we will be live streaming graduation again. Last year, we had tons of viewers who could not attend. We can't tell exactly where they are, but you can see the numbers of hits you get for the viewing. So all of our graduation ceremonies will be live streamed this year. And I thought that would be nice news as you continue to work with your population.
How do you publicize? How do people know that?
We just, we put it out. We will put it on the website. Schools will put it on their website. So if grandmas or family members can't make it for whatever reason, they can stream it.
I agree with that, yeah.
Isn't that nice? So thanks to you all. We've been sort of moving forward. We've done it for a few years. We were not certain whether it was gonna happen again, but we're on go with live streaming for graduation. Wilton Day, Leadership Day, is tomorrow. So they asked that I remind this group about Leadership Day tomorrow at Wilton. The board is cordially invited. I believe I'm scheduled to be down there at 9:30. And on Wednesday, May 8th. If you could, we will be celebrating that as Teacher Appreciation Week. Instead of just honoring our teachers, because all of us are educators. It starts from the time children get on that school bus to the time they get home. We are going to have Education Appreciation Day for all of our educators, bus drivers, custodians, everyone, in the form of Ice Cream Sundays at the end of the day. So if there's a particular school where you would like to go and maybe help serve, central office ambassadors have been assigned to schools. We go over to make certain the clubs are there. The child nutrition department, we get it through our child nutrition department and every educator in the district. But we encourage you to go out to schools and to help serve Ice Cream Sundays. May 8th, at the end of the school day.
And what does that mean?
Well, the times differ. It depends on the schools because of the differing bus times. We share buses with schools. So if you let me, I'll be happy to tell you what time certain schools release. Because they're not all at the same time. But we'd love to have you in our schools. Next week, the one day, we have several dates at the bottom of your page that I just ask you to pay particular attention to. They're all important. But next week, May 2nd, that is our Evening of Excellence. And this is probably our highest honor in the school district as a signature program. We will be honoring, as we did last year, all straight A students, all perfect attended students. And this year is especially important because we will make the big announcement of our Teacher of the Year. We will be doing all of that on that evening, Evening of Excellence, May 2nd. Ms. Day and I will be in ball gowns again. Dr. Myrick and Dr. Winmore are gonna put on some bow ties, so feel free to join us. It is a signature event for us. And the families really enjoyed seeing us make it so special. So please come and join us. But we have several dates at the bottom. We want to just bring to your attention and make sure you get it. And that concludes my remarks. Is he?
Great. Yeah, sure.
Well, what time is the Leadership Day morning tomorrow?
It begins at 9:30, I believe. That's what I have on my schedule.
9:30 to 10:45.
To 10:45.
They do a great job. That is truly an impressive... To me, it's a great example of what choice schools are. To go there, I mean, it's... Have you been to it, Mr.?
Couple, three times.
Yeah, it's terrific. Eevee?
I do have a question. Dr. McLean, do you have any idea of the allocation of the funds from GDF? They indicated that we get a significant portion. What portion of the funds? In other words, we're sharing these with charter schools? So I don't know. How much are we getting?
I can certainly find out. A portion of the funds. We know we had the prize patrol go around earlier this fall, was it? Do you recall right off, Dr. Myrick, how many of our schools received prizes?
I don't.
I don't either, right off.
At the last meeting, they said that last year we received nearly $100,000.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's kind of grant basis, right?
Yes.
Our teachers have to apply for that.
They apply for the grants, that's correct.
When we got into that argu... controversial deal about teacher, beginning of the year, one of the things that... There was a meeting that a couple of us attended. One of the things they said is that we would not ever receive less money than we received last year.
And that's what we just wanted to confirm.
Right. They said it. They all... And to pick up on that, I mean, I've got my ticket money sitting on the top of my desk because I'm not sure. I'm just struggling with it. I'd like to know how many charter school people have my tickets. I'd like to know exactly.
They're gonna be subsidizing them.
Well, you know, it's like, it's like, we're gonna get money and all that. They're gonna do it, which is their business. But how much are they putting into the pot?
I must wonder if there's ever a way you're ever gonna be able to figure that out, Father.
Well, you know, we can ask.
I'll take those two.
They can always ask, anyway. I mean, you know, it's just... Don't get a start on that. That's a topic that... Okay.
Dr. McLean, did they change executive directors? I thought Lisa...
They had changed.
Lisa's no longer there?
No, sir. She is not.
Was she in there?
She was full-time. She was full-time. But they have a new director. Meeting before last, they introduced the name. The name is escaping me, but it is... I'm sorry. Jennifer Cofalo. They do have a new director. I'm sorry.
Okay. Couple of announcements. First of all, I just would like to mention to you that... And Mr. Peace was there. The Night of Kindness that was held earlier this week was an absolutely terrific, terrific experience. And if you get a chance next year, frankly, I had no idea what it was even about. But it was... What it was, for those of you who don't remember or whatever, a child from each school in Granville County wrote a letter. And was selected from that school to read the letter that he or she wrote to somebody that was sitting in the audience. And they did not know why they were there. And, I mean, even I had a few tears in my eyes.
We did.
It was a great, great experience. One that, you know, one of the best ones I've been to. One of the best events. So next year, make sure everybody knows, because it was, it was, it was very, very...
One of the things that's interesting to me was the elementary students wrote about their parent. The high school, middle school students wrote about coaches and staff, you know, adult people that were related to school in some way.
And even one student in the school written by... It was amazing.
It was all serious, so... The trial has passed, right?
Yeah, yes.
It wasn't good. It wasn't good.
It was.
Okay, anyway, it was great. You see on your calendar, May the 9th. May the 9th is the date that we all agreed to tentatively. Although we have so many dates, it's hard to truthfully keep up with them all. But that's the day we're going to have our training on the superintendent's evaluation form. We can set the time. It's gonna be rough. It'll be a minimum of two hours. And if there's conversation and we need to go further than that, that will be the case. But it will be provided by somebody that the North Carolina School Board Association recommends. We will be paying approximately $1,000 for this service, including travel. And I think it will be a good experience for all of us so that when we get ready to go through that evaluation process with our superintendent, we'll all basically know what we're talking about. Please make a note that before you come, please look at that document that you have and go through each one of the criteria so that you are familiar with it. And there may be specific questions you've got about this one or this one or whatever. But if you don't come, if we're not all prepared for that, it's going to be much less effective. Okay? Now, we can decide what time we want to do it that's best for everybody. Would 3 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, whatever is best for you all, it's certainly best for us. Danny may be the one person that we don't really know his schedule. So, anyway, what should... What about 3 o'clock? Does that work for everybody? Okay with you? Mr. Peace? Uh, yeah, what day?
May 9th is a Thursday.
And it's okay with you? Okay? Okay, so we'll set it May 9th at 3 o'clock. And I'll make a note to call them that. All right, then, one last thing. We want to welcome Eva back. She was overseas for six weeks and finally got back. She... The only way she got back, she didn't want to get off the plane. She wanted to go right back. Except for her kids, they didn't want to go back.
Very glad to be here.
Yeah, that... And you had trouble getting back, didn't you?
Yes.
Let's not go there, Father. All right. That's all from me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, gentlemen, thank you for being here. We are continuing our work with the budget preparation for next year. Our next meeting is slated for the 29th. I believe I put that in an email earlier today. And at that meeting, we are meeting to approve the proposal. So tonight, we want to accomplish two tasks. One is to make certain we have all... That we're all clear about our work last week for the operational budget. And then the second part is to talk about the capital items we will be putting into the budget. Before we get to that piece, though, our state superintendent sent an email today regarding the transparency of funds. And we thought we'd better make our board aware of what this entails, what we've kind of seen over the course of the last few months and where we are today. Because this is effective right now. So I'll ask Ms. Day to spend just a minute or two on that, and then we will dive into the budget. Ms. Day?
Board members, you received an email prior to this meeting. I sent an email to everyone. Forwarded the email from the state superintendent to you all that has the link to the web... To the financial transparency website. Finance officers and superintendents, I believe, back in January, received a website for us to preview of this financial transparency and to give input on this. And we, at the annual meeting that finance officers have in February, we discussed, we were able to discuss it with his staff. And there was a lot of concern over the state about, we're all for financial transparency, but we were concerned that some of the information might be misleading or did not tie back to our information that we had and that kind of thing. And so we sent in, we were able to give feedback on that. Well, we gave feedback, and then the next that we know is that it's live today. That was the next thing that we saw, was that it was live. The website was live. As I understand it, there have been some changes made since the time that we previewed it, but we didn't have an opportunity to preview any of the changes. So I would like to put, bring that to y'all's, your attention, that that information is out there. And there is one thing, and I want to offer, that I can go over it in more detail at the May meeting, if that is of interest to the board for that. But one thing I did want to point out, and if this passes around... I was able to, I pulled some information this afternoon. One of the things that is included on the website, on that web, financial transparency website, is the amount that is allotted for certain allotments that we get, certain state allotments. And then it reflects if there are transfers in or out of that allotment. But not all allotments are included on the website. So that looks like there are some transfers out, but you don't see where the transfer in is. And so I just wanted to, you know, talk about that for a minute, just so that you would be able to see. And Granville County schools, and I can give more detail and give you specifics about it, but in general, a lot of our transfers that we make in our funds are into the non-instructional support category, state category. And that is the category that pays for our custodians, our substitutes, and the clerical. And so what I've given you is kind of a history of that category. And just so that you could kind of see the amount that we get allotted for that category and then the amount that we spend in that category, and that's what's on this sheet.
Ms. Day, I have to admit that I don't understand what you're talking about.
So...
I think allotment...
So we get our state allotments in different categories. And so on this website, they show certain, only certain of those categories, not all of the allotment. Different categories are on the website. And it shows some transfers out. And in my mind, the question that...
It shows some transfers out. What does that mean?
Well, so that's, so, yes.
Transfer of funds.
Transfer of funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we get state allotments in different pots.
Yeah, okay.
And we are allowed to transfer between some of those allotments. So they show on the website that we got so much money for, say, textbooks. And then it shows a transfer out. Well, to me, when the average person looks at that, it leads the question, transferring out to where? Just like you're asking.
Yeah.
You know, where is that money going? And so the non-instructional support category, where we pay for custodians, clerical, and substitutes, that allotment category is not on the website. But that is where a lot of the transfers are into. And I wanted to give you a history of that non-instructional support to answer the question, well, why is that? Why do we do that? Back, when you look at this document, if you start with '07, '08, we got 2.3 million in that category. '08, '09, we got 2.4 million. In '09, '10, we got $68,000 in that category. Well, that was the year we got federal stabilization money. And so it helped to... They basically said, we don't have enough money to fund this. We're gonna give you this federal money, no harm, no foul. You know, you've got the same amount of money. Well, so then, again, in '10, '11, we got $128,000 in that category as an initial allotment. But then when the money came back in '11, '12, we got 1.9. The whole, the amount of money that we had gotten in that allotment category never came back. That's my point. It never came back. So we've had to transfer money into that allotment category. And I don't know that every school district does that, but we are trying to maintain as many people out of our state funds as we possibly can. And so we have made those transfers. So my point in telling you all of this is just to answer that question. Where was that money transferred out to? Because I think that's a natural question when you look, when you dig into and look at that website. To me, that's the question that's gonna come to your mind that's not answered by looking at the website.
And looking at this afternoon, it looked a lot like the report card website. It's just enough information to confuse people and make it 10 times worse than if we had never turned something. Is what it looked like.
I think that was the fear several individuals in finance were concerned about. And to be very honest, I think there's also concern across the state that we weren't very certain what it would look like till we saw we released it out.
So let me ask you a question. How does that affect Granville County schools? The bottom line, what does it do to our finances?
Well...
I mean, I think I understand.
Right. Right, so... What's due to our finances? I mean, the fact that we didn't get those non-instructional support money back, it... I mean, we're using state money and... Because you know that we're in the local...
So you're feeling the whole thing. The state created it.
Right.
With local.
With state money. We're not... You know where we're all with local. We don't have the local money to do it. So then that state money is being used.
Transferred to do it.
Is transferred to do it.
From...
From other categories of money that they're allotting to other, you know, for other purposes. But we have those expenditures.
Well, I think that all of us would agree that we put all of our faith in you as a superintendent to transfer and do whatever you're supposed to do and let us report back to us. And if we can't trust you, then we're in deep trouble. So how you do those allotments, it's not legally... You've been doing that for probably 15, 20 years. Obviously, what the state superintendent says, or Christ, if you us all, is keep on trucking unless other board members have concerns.
I do have a question out of curiosity. Based on what I heard the state say, the funds, in essence, never came back. So when I look at '07, '08, and '09, and then look at the decreases and seeing that we have never recovered to the '09 year, what I would be curious to know is, what is it that we are not funding or supporting now that we were doing in '07, '08, and '09?
I mean, most likely, it is textbooks and it's instruct... You know, it supplies. But the state's argument is, we have funded it as textbooks. You know, we have given those allotments as textbooks. But to be truthful, that is most likely the answer, Mr. Day. Which is not a good answer, but...
Mr. Rivers?
Well, what I see here is kind of why we're sort of in the budget mess we're in. Since it's '07, '08, we're down, what, 20% in ADM? We figured that last meeting. I think we're down 20% in ADM.
No, it's not 20%. Yeah. I mean, it... The charter school is projected as 19% of our enrollment, but we're not down 19%.
Well, we're down from almost 9,000 to 75,000. And yet our expenses, our actual expenses for clerical, custodial, and the like have gone up 25%. So that's the problem. We're getting a lot less ADM money, but our expenses just keep going up. We've got to... I mean, that's right there. Why we gotta close schools and we gotta shed people.
Because you got the 25%. I guarantee you, most of that is increases in salary.
Yeah, you gotta look at the inflation.
And the retirement rate. I mean, the way that the retirement rate has changed over that time period is considerable. I mean, it's...
I mean, this, this right here shows what we have to do. We just can't keep putting it off. We gotta do it.
Yes, and that's...
So there were many documents, Ms. Day, could show. But I think the most important thing is, just take a look at what was sent out. Everyone across the state today gets it forwarded to each of you. And if you're interested, we can go deeper at another meeting.
I don't... Well, okay. You are not gonna get unconfused there. But after 50 years of this thing, I am confused.
Or call Ms. Day if I say that.
Thank you.
Make it better for what it is.
Yeah. Can you change anything for the best?
When we looked at it, we thought, well, my goodness. We sort of felt the same way. We said, well, we're gonna get questions now. Because it is left open-ended, transfer, and it doesn't say to where, for what. And that is confusing to people.
You probably wouldn't get any questions.
You're probably gonna get seven in Oxford.
All right. Ms. Day?
Ms. Day.
Will you? All right, let's get ready to work. Ready to work?
Okay, so, board members, you have in your folders two packets for the budget. And the first one we're gonna look at, it says draft operating budget, local current expense. And within that, you have several stapled, or you have two stapled parts in one single sheet. We're gonna start with that first stapled part that's got one bubble on the front. And so you might be asking yourself, this is not exactly what I'm expecting to see because we had several, we had several bubbles that were gonna go on the expansion. And I do have some good news, and I'm cautiously optimistic about this, that I received a call from the county manager that our increased cost, the total amount of our increased cost, is currently in his draft county manager's budget as continuation funding. So the $923,898 is included as continuation right now in the draft county manager's budget. I don't know that it will stay in there. This is draft, and he's meeting with commissioners, and I'm not sure that that will stay. And I'm not sure that he necessarily has a balanced budget right now to be able to keep that as continuation, that they will keep that. But right now, it is in the draft of the county manager's budget, which is very good news because the last meetings that we, when we met, and this was based on the liaisons, the liaison meeting that was had, and their work after the liaison meeting, when they, when our liaisons met with their liaisons as far as providing information about our budget. So I really appreciate the work of the liaisons.
Constable fried chicken.
Yeah, it's a fried chicken.
Fried chicken? So... But that is big. And I don't want to underestimate the power of that because I think we all agree that if nothing else was to get support, we needed this box to get support. So we pulled it out by itself because it is resting in a different place at this point. So Ms. Day, go from there.
So that, and that's why it's titled included in continuation funding for the county. And so then you just have some supporting documentation associated with that dollar figure. You know, just sort of a short description of that, and then...
Page three is important.
The page three includes, and that's the one with the lines on it, includes the current, like, retirement rate that we have, what, the retirement rate that is included in the 1920 proposed budget. And then how much is the increase? So the rates at the top of the page, in the middle of the page are the dollars, which, as you can see, the total is for Granville County Public Schools is $748,000. That's our cost. And then the charter school portion is $175,000. So that gets to that total funding needed, $923,898. And that is what the county manager says is in the draft, their draft budget for continuation. And then the bottom portion is just an example of the impact, just so that you can see, and that it'll be part of the document so that commissioners can see what the impact is of those rate increases. You know, so pulling the average teacher cost from '18, '19, how much that increased? Because we're using 3.5% increase. So that increased 3.5%. Well, then in turn, the 10% teacher supplement increased 3.5%. Social Security increased 3.5%. That cost. Retirement increased 7%. Even though there's two factors. There's the retirement rate increase, but then there's also the salary increase. The 3.5% increase causes the retirement to be more. And then the health insurance increase. And so then the total cost of an average teacher increases by 4.08%. So that is just an example of the impact of those rate increases.
Ms. Day, on the state superintendent's deal here, it says the average teacher salary in North Carolina is now $54,000 per school year. So is your $45,000?
That's our average state cost, just on the state scale. So when, I think, when, I think his number includes supplement.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Is this good, everyone? Is this good, everyone, on the bridge of that?
And then the last page is just a history of, um, what we've requested for, for cost increases, what the fu- the operate, total operating funding in the last three years, what we've requested for cost increases, what have been, has been funded for cost increases. And then, um, just, you know, at this time of the year, we're basing on estimates, you know, what, what our best estimate of these rates are. So looking at what, okay, what was, what did we request, what was the budget calculated on is in the yellow versus what actually happened for that year is in the green. And then the kind of peach color at the end is the difference between what had been for those last three years, just to see. And so some years we were, the rate was, um, higher, and some years the rate was lower than what had been originally requested. Just a, again, a little bit more, um, support for that request of, um, the salary benefit increases. So the next section that you have is the, um, operating expansion items, and, um, this was what was discussed at, at the last board meeting. So it, when we talked about everything on the top line, of course, that first bubble is on the, on the separate sheet now, because it's gonna, it's in the budget, in the continuation budget. So we've got those, those first two top lines are existing transitional services. Our portion, our needs are, for those two bo- boxes together are eight hundred and four, well, for our needs are two hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine twenty-two and four twenty-six five sixty-nine. And then you can see the amount underneath of it, um, that includes the nineteen percent for the charter funding pass-through. And then at the bottom, the expansion services that were discussed, the, um, the, a matching, um, half position for communities and schools, forty thousand, and with the charter school pass-through, forty-nine, three eighty-three, and then the EC compliance position, ninety thousand five hundred with the nineteen percent charter school pass-through, one eleven, seven twenty-eight. So the total of the expansion request is a million eight thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars.
That is our work from last Monday, is this the way everyone remembers it?
Yes. And we got a message, I guess, from the county manager. Is he included in this, in this budget?
No, I mean, that, that, the, the increased cost was what was had been included.
In other words, based on the meetings with the, with the liaison meetings, all of this was discussed.
Not all the details of that I know of, because we, I don't, and I may be wrong.
We hadn't made a.
We had, as a board, yet to do this.
Well, and we, we showed them every possibility that might be on this.
I, isn't it if what we do tonight then would put together, and that's what we'll present to the commissioners?
Absolutely, absolutely. So what we're doing tonight is we're checking the final decisions from last Monday to make certain we've got everything, and then we'll move to, to county.
Well, what I, is, what is a little curious, I, I thought I heard you say that the county manager had included a portion of this in his budget.
So.
So when was that discussed versus when was this discussed?
No, you're, you're right, our first piece, remember, we started, um, our board meeting the last time with this document. It was kind of that, you know, the initial start, we, we shared this in the liaison meeting, as our possibilities. And our liaisons did an exceptional job of explaining, the first box, however, is a top priority, we really need that. And so that's the call that came in, that he's reconsidered now and is in the continuation budget, at least for the present.
Because originally, when we met, or, yes, right, it was two and a half percent increase, and was what had been put in the continuation budget.
And they, our liaisons really had to sort of build a little case, well, I mean, we have no choice, we want to take care of our people, and, and when those decisions are made at the state level, the money has to come from somewhere, so.
One of the con, one of the things that I think, and even if, uh, with Mr. Phelps having worked here before, we got half of that money roughly, or whatever the amount was initially, and that was the majority of the discussion about, you cannot do this to us. We, and, and I said, I said, Mike, I said, towards the end, I said, you're gonna cut us and not pay for the, the, uh, benefits and the increases that we have to have. And yet, are you gonna do that with your own people? Are you gonna pay for all of those with people who are state-funded? And he said, yes, I said, so how are you doing that and not doing for us? And he, his comment was, and I think he was being legitimate, that, uh, they have to make cuts in all of their departments to be able to pay for their increases and so forth, and be that as may, yes, no, indifferent. So we really pushed, that's fine, you have that choice, we don't. We can't decide what we are or not gonna pay for because the state requires it. Anyway, the bottom line is, actually, I think that Mr. Phelps, uh, learned something there, and, and certainly going back and, and doing what he did. But like, like, he put it in the budget, that doesn't mean anything, who knows where it's gonna go from there?
But it's an indication, uh, at least it's in the budget, if it wasn't in there in the first place.
True, that's right, Mr. Vence, you're right, you're exactly right.
Considered, and that's my point about the other items, if it were there, they could eliminate it, if it's not there, that's sort of sending a signal to, to this board. If you really want these things, carry up the cash, if you want to.
Well, they'll be on there as expansion.
And I understand.
Right, right, for consideration, right.
Excellent points, we were happy to get that call, it's, it's in a little bit of a safer place than it was last Monday.
As you mentioned, it's not in there.
That's right, so our fingers are crossed at this point, and of course, it's early in their budget season too, but we were appreciative of the gesture, and we'll see where it goes. Uh, Miss Day, will you share the next few slides because we felt, you know, you all asked us last year, and so did our commissioners, about giving supporting information, why is it important? So we reached out, we reached out to principals and staff, and what you'll find on the next few slides up here, um, are just informa- it's good information. Why do we need the things we now list to around this table? So Stan, I think you can sort of scroll some of that, because they have that in the packet, is that right there?
And that would be good to, to read through there, um, the bullet points that are under the different positions are, um, information or quotes, um, feelings of the principals, directly from principals about these, um, these positions, so, um, I just encourage you to, to, to look at that. The, um, it's information about the CIS position from the CNI department, and then information, um, about the EC, um, compliance specialists from the EC department.
Now, I will tell you, I think you will find that chart most interesting in this packet, if you go to that EC, uh, fiscal responsibility piece, have a look at that chart at the bottom of the page. You'll see a little chart at the bottom, expansion service for fiscal responsibility, is that not telling? And we put it up on the screen as well, but when our EC director provided us this data, I thought, I'm really glad we asked for additional supporting data, because it's powerful.
Why do we have to pay for that, why don't we have, I mean, what, how does Warren County have two people? I mean, you know, it just, it's so frustrating, it's like, we have to do all this, but we don't have the personnel, so the county is supposed to pick it up?
I'll tell you, one of the things I think, um, we have realized, Mr. Rivers sort of alluded to it, is we have so many different campuses, meeting services, that we're spread a lot thinner than Warren County, because they don't have near a number of buildings with children. So when we're trying to meet IEP needs of students, you still have this compliance issue, but it's the spread.
And I, I spend a lot of time with the special education department, and it is, and with special education departments in other counties, and it is very newly-staffed here in Greavill. One thing, I've been working a lot with one middle school student, and with the combination of Mary Potter and Olden Greavill, from the EC perspective, it's actually great because, you know, then the special education resources of those schools will be a location, and that's much better.
But I, I thought that was powerful data when we got it. So that's what you have in this packet, and we, this one is just a cross-check of our work last Monday, where we captured all of the thoughts, we have supporting data, and we have the ask, is this correct?
I, I, I just one point that you, you obviously need to think about, and that is, we have closed two buildings because of costs and all that. Asking for more positions in clerical, et cetera, when we've closed two schools. I'm asking this in terms, if I were a commissioner, I might ask that question, explain to me why we closed those two schools? You don't explain, I, you, but you, that may come up.
Well, I do have a somewhat ancillary question. Last year, we were looking for nine fifty-five, seven seventy, and we closed two schools to help us get there. With this expansion, we're talking about a million eight six thirty-one. And if that is not in the commissioner's budget, and if we don't get those funds from the commissioners, then, Mr. Chair, the question is directed to you, is this a fait accompli that we are going to fund balance? I mean, listen, it got to come from someplace if we're gonna do it, and if they don't fund it, last year, when they didn't fund, and the superintendent said she needed it, we closed schools to help close that gap, so I mean, we got to get it out on the table sometime, either now or Monday night.
Can I add one point of clarification? If we, if we had to fund it ourselves, it would be eight sixteen, because the charter school pass-through would not, would not, so I just wanna make that clear.
All right, last year was nine fifty-five, this year we're saying eight sixteen. The question is, what are the options?
Let's, let's say it a different way, just to throw this in there. We used eight sixty-six of fund balance last year, approximately. We closed two schools and saved roughly six hundred thousand dollars. I think we've used the term roughly two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that we didn't save from those two schools. So we talked about the legitimacy, informally talked about the legitimacy of taking two sixty-six out of fund balance. So the point is, going back to, uh, Ms. Minsh, what you said, we have to make a policy decision as a board. Do we stick to our guns about balancing the budget and use two sixty-six to do that? Or do we forget about all the stuff we said, reasons for closing those schools, and go in and take another million dollars for fund balance? And the, the, the issue is, how long can we take a million dollars out of fund balance? And that's one of the reasons that we made the decisions to close those schools, that is our decision, whatever it might be, that is our decision. Does that make sense?
It, it does, but I just want to be clear on one point, and that's if it's a two sixty-six or two fifty or whatever the amount was, that's due this year, that's current. And we're not talking using fund balance next year, that's a bill that's due now, because that nine fifty-five were, were, what, eighteen, nineteen bills that we had to pay.
Right, right.
So that means fund balance this year, no matter what it is, we're gonna still have to come out two sixty-six. Then if the board chooses, we'll have to look at another eight sixteen.
Right, so, so right now, the, the way that the budget is balanced, based on you, your discussion, I have not, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars out of, of fund balance appropriated for nineteen-twenty coming out, and that, it's balanced. So in other words, our expenses are two hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars more than the revenue sources I have budgeted for nineteen-twenty.
So if we got nothing else, that's seven twenty, but that's seven twenty-three for to pay all the ongoing expenses, then we really would have to make a decision.
Do, do you do what's on this page or not, or, you know, what do you do?
Or, I hate to say this, but go back and look at the current budget and see if there are any items in there that could be reduced or cut or whatever.
Because after you get the county budget, then you come back, and you can revise it.
Well, we have to revise it.
Because right now, it's based on us getting this money, this, getting this money.
Sure.
Miss Day, will you take us to this document, this is a new document, but it captures, we, we, and we have, I do hope that we've changed some of what, you know, has gone in historically with hopes that we're, you know, we want to be transparent with all this, so Miss Day, will you walk us through this document?
Yes, exactly. So this is a, a kind of a different way to look at, um, the reconciliation or the, um, what we're asked, what we will, the total of what we are requesting and what our budget is based on, um, asking the county for. So the very first line is our current county appropriation, our local funds. And you may recall when we, um, met before, we had looked at what our local budget was, and you saw what we're spending local money on. And so you see that first, that top line, we, if you go all the way to that, um, kind of bluish line at the end, the total, fifteen point three million, that's what we're currently receiving from the county. Now, we receive a total of fifteen point three million, but Greavill County Public Schools, that first ten line, um, ten column, receives twelve point seven million of that, and we have budgeted for the charter schools, two point six million. So we are netting the twelve point seven million of that, of that fifteen point three. The portion in the orange at the top, um, is the continuation budget, and that's what we talked about first, that the county, is in the county manager's budget. So the state mandated salary and benefit increases, including the charter pass-through of nine hundred and twenty-three thousand eight ninety-eight, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand three fifty-seven being Greavill County public schools expenditures. Those, that is included in the continuation budget, so then you get a subtotal line of what, the, the, right now, the county manager's draft budget includes appropriation to Greavill County Public Schools for our current expense or for our operating of sixteen point three million. And of that, we would net thirteen point five based on the nineteen percent, um, pass-through to charter schools. The next section, that reddish section, is the expansion item, so that's everything that was on this next sheet that we looked, we just looked at, are included, well, it's not everything, it's, it's part of that. The, the red portion is, are the first two blocks, which are our existing transitional services that we need, based on the number of facilities that we have. And that totals, including the charter school, the eight hundred and forty-seven thousand five twenty. And then that, that next section, that green section, are those, the bottom two green boxes on this sheet, and that totaled one hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. So of that total amount that we're requesting in additional funding as expansion from the county of a million eight, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand are existing positions, and one hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and eleven dollars are for new services. However, a- a- as you all know, the communities and schools position is a current position that we have, so we're really trying to keep that. And the EC compliance, we've had those positions in the past, um, so this is getting us back to where we have been previously with that. So then that first yellow line at the bottom i- is what I just quoted, the million eight, that's the total amount of money, additional money. that's the total amount of money, additional money asked for, from the county. And then that next line, adjustment for projected charter ADM increase. As we've talked about, we're projecting, this budget is based on a hundred and eighty additional students going to charter schools next year. So that, the funding for those students would come from our column, from Grahamville County Public Schools, and go to the charter schools. And so that's a net of, it, it's between those two columns. So then at the bottom, you get what the total proposed county appropriation for current expense would be for the nineteen twenty budget, which is a total of seventeen million three hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. And of that, Grahamville County Public Schools would recen, net thirteen million nine hundred ninety-two thousand eight thirty-four. And then based on the nineteen percent that passed through to the charter schools would be three million three hundred and twenty-three thousand one thirty-seven. So I thought that that was a good way to kind of put this all together and you'd be able to see the bottom line of what we'd be requesting from the county.
Ms. Day, this is a question about the process. Do, do the charter schools, they do nothing on budget, they just sit back and wait to see what we get? I mean, they don't have to have all this work that we're doing and...
They wait for their check each month.
Or stand up at the county commissioners' public hearing and say that it'd be supported.
So they're, they're not, they're not lobbying for...
Because they send her a bill once a month and she sends them a check.
So we get a monthly deal that has student names and addresses.
But they can only bill, they can only bill the nineteen percent, they can't...
So they deal, they, they just send us names and addresses. And then it is our responsibility to calculate what the per pupil amount is, but the law is very specific about the amount of money to go to the charter schools.
And don't you even have to do the workers' check that that's legitimate?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
They have to check all their students to make sure they're Grahamville County students.
Right. Because sometimes there are addresses that are misleading, you know, as far as which county it's in.
So how does the charter school do their budget? I mean, if they, like, like, we know what we need and we know what we're going to ask for. They can't ask for the county commissioners for anything, they, they just have to wait to see what we get?
Pretty much.
I mean, so if they, they want to build a new library or do something, they just can't plan unless they raise their own money?
Well, for buildings, they have to raise their money anyway, don't they? They can't use state money for buildings.
That's why I asked the question about how many people are going to these fundraisers from the charter schools. Because it's just another example, they sit back and do nothing and they get Ed Foundation funds. They don't get, it's, it's...
This is law saying, we gotta give them the plan for all that they get. Whether they do, you know, they, they don't have to make a choice of what they need to get the money.
I don't recall seeing a team that's celebration.
There you go.
Be curious to me, like, do they even know what it is to, to get that? I mean, it doesn't matter, you just be curious to know if they know all the news and...
You have to keep in mind also that some of the, for profit, I mean, they're run by for-profit companies, so there's also this sort of percentage that has gone to profit.
Although, but for profit, a profit...
I think that probably varies, but yeah.
And that's why when we had our long ones, we, we do think it's important that we keep up with, for the majority of our children are going and then you have some for ones, like one in the mountains where one child is attending, all those sorts of things because the dollar's out of. And when we see three point three million, that's, that's just one dollar. That's significant. So I think for Ms. Day and myself, because we're trying to get, you know, this, this entire document to get everyone to get a book, is this a helpful document in explaining to commissioners and the public about the money? Is, is this helpful here? Is the first one? Please.
It must be worth, and I don't know, maybe the county commissioners know, to put some kind of explanation in there about the charter pass through because even a board member didn't realize how that works. So maybe just to explain, a bill submitted, we have to verify and it's passed through.
Yeah, that's a good way to, yeah.
Thank you.
You know, I'm, I'm curious whether the county could audit the charter schools finances. I know we, I know they wouldn't allow us to do it.
The state certainly can. I don't know though. I don't see why a county couldn't, it should be public.
Well, the charter schools are on that website that they debut today. Yeah, I didn't go to look at one, there's a whole, you pick a district and then you pick whether you want the public district or the charter school.
Sure, based on the amount of money that they get, they're hard to have a audit. But I like that.
Are there budgets online?
There would need to be some transparency.
Some sort, some sort of...
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. So I think we can close that chapter, we have our marching orders, and we can move to the next chapter for this evening, which is capital outlay.
Oh, oh.
Oh, yes, this, this is important. Now, we did not put this in your packet because honestly, we just sort of pulled that towards the, the second part of today, but we, we think this is important.
Can you thank your bigger, please?
So the, let me just kind of tell you what, what is included here. This is back to nine ten and what is included is our, the additional county appropriation or the additional current expense operating money that we got in each year and the percentage of the increase. And then that green is the amount that Grahamville County Public Schools had, the purple is the amount that flowed through to the charter schools, and then the blue is the total current expense appropriation. So when I say like seventy-two thousand, the twelve million three eighty-five, two eighty-seven was seventy-two thousand more than the previous year. So you can see what the, what the increase was each year and the percentage of increase. So that, that's what is on there and you can see the last couple of years, the percentage of increase. What is interesting is if, as a hypothetical, just as, as projected, if you go to the right, if you looked at, if we had received, if we had been on a three and a half percent funding model each year and had gotten three and a half percent every year over that time period, those are the amounts that we would receive. And if you scroll down, so for night, that last row is nineteen twenty, assuming what, what this, these documents include, what we would be, what we're requesting. We are requesting a total of seventeen million three hundred and fifteen thousand nine seventy-one. And that yellow over there in the hypothetical is if we received three and a half percent every year, we would be at seventeen point four million in local county current expense appropriation. So the amount that we're asking for, although it's a, a large percentage increase, it is not more than what that would be.
Would have been on target if that had been called.
A three and a half percent increase over, over time.
Mr. Mench, you were on the board then. Why, why didn't you give us any money?
Let me just sort of, this is the point. I wasn't going to say anything, but I will say this about this. And this is why boards of education meet with county commissioners to sit down and figure out a funding profile based on a flat rate of growth. So you don't have the vacillations that we, we have been having. And boards of education are able to do a better job of projecting their, their funding based on having a, if it's a three, some percentage increase that they can depend on as opposed to you putting together a budget, going over and mother may I, and not sure what you're going to come back with. And that's why that North Carolina statute that allows the board chair to ask the county commissioner chair for a sit-down meeting, that's why that is so important. You don't have to go to litigation, but for the very reason that you're showing that we need these funds, if you can come up with a flat rate that everybody can live with, whether it's one percent or two percent or whatever, everybody sort of knows where they will be in the out years. Right now, and that's why you've heard the, the comment, we can ask, Mr. Peace has said, hey, we've asked every time. And we never got it.
You know, for, for, for a few years, we, we went through this process of trying to determine what percentage. And that showed on, on that formula, we, we weren't too successful at trying to do that.
Well, and, but that's the reason why you, you try to hold a commissioner speak to the fire to give you a better, a firmer way to plan the school system's needs.
Isn't that what Mike Veltz has said they want to do?
The commissioners have talked about that at the state level. In, in other words, when you have the secondary reg, I mean, people know that this is a smoother way for boards of education to plan. Not just each year going in, not being uncertain as to what you're going to get. So I'm glad you, you did this, that's excellent.
We, we do, we have heard county manager Veltz say he'd love to get to a place where we had a set funding formula. Not to suggest there won't be times we have other needs, but it is to say we could plan accordingly and for us, when we went back and looked over time, we see in a little better place, actually. That's not a heck of a lot more, but it's a little better as we see where we are. So I, I do think, we, we threw this in, I just thought it was interesting information.
Well, the commissioners would know what they need to do every year as well. So everybody would have some sense of the budget process, not getting any shocks that the board of education is going to come in and ask for some astronomical figure. Hey, you know you're going to get three and a half percent, you're going to live within your means, as I've heard you say, Mr. Peace. The board of education has had to live within the standards.
The charter school fluctuation, ADM of the charter schools, so we could have a three and a half percent, if we get two hundred and fifty kids go to charter schools or we only get twenty kids go to charter schools, it's going to make huge budget changes.
But think of how much more effort and time we could spend making this the best district where kids wouldn't leave if we didn't have to spend months doing this.
That's exactly right. And the superintendent would better be able to plan the programs that needs to be brought in to our school system to be competitive.
Very good, very helpful.
All right, on to capital outlay, if everyone is comfortable with where we are right now. Where would capital outlay, Ms. Day?
So board members, you have, and I have included, they're not, they were just paper put together so that you could kind of put them side by side. You have two different versions of capital outlay expansion items. So you've got a staples and then a one sheet behind, that was behind capital outlay. So as we talked about before, the amount in that first box is, if you look at the one single sheet with Tolar, this is similar to what you have seen before. This is the amount that is needed with the master facility plan for year one, including all the schools included in the master facility plan. So one point four million and I think, when, when you have, there's a, there was an updated sheet to the master facility plan total page.
Let me add back, interrupt, so you can, what do you mean with Tolar?
So included in the master facility plan, all of the schools are included and Tolar, there's a tab for Tolar and it has projects on, in this master facility plan, year one, year two. And so one of the things that I'm here tonight to ask you is, is that, are we doing those projects or do I need to subtract that out and do with out Tolar? And so that's why you've got a document with out Tolar.
And let's qualify a little further. It sounds like a crazy question on the surface because of the decisions that have been made, but until the decision is made about what to do with Tolar, then we have the question regarding the facility. Will it be that the board keeps Tolar, will create some usage for it and these things are needed, or will it be that that is not the plan? So regarding the capital component for this year, you're not making the decision right now about what to do with Tolar, you just need to know, do we need to do the projects or not?
But isn't that sort of putting the, maybe it's the cart behind the horse, that once we make a decision and since we made the decision about Tolar, shouldn't that dictate what we do? In other words, we're saying we're going to repair roofs and plumbing and other stuff. I mean, we're not disposing of the facility. The board voted to close it. And there were two options. You could save X amount of dollars if you did something and you could save X amount of dollars if you fully invested. So...
So we, but there, we haven't made the decision yet about what to do with that facility.
Still one of our properties.
And as soon as we make that decision, if, if we make the decision to get rid of it, which I think we are formally, I don't believe we've done that, then that becomes a question, do we go ahead and take care of all those things that need to be done before we sell it? And I, I think I know where you feel. I think I agree.
Yeah, no, I don't think we should fit standard opinion.
Absolutely. Not a single...
Not a single cent.
But I think best... But I think Ms. Day's point is somebody needs to tell her to do that.
We need the director. We don't want to make any assumptions.
Don't spin a dime.
So that is the document that's got, that's got the staple.
Did you get that in the minutes, Ms. Day?
That's got the staple in it and it's got the, the detail behind it is if we don't do the projects, this is taking out, this is the year one that's in the master facility plan, but it does not include the HVAC or the roofing because that is taken care of with the fifteen million of the money that we have already received from the county. So that's part of those projects. So it's year one, less roofing and HVAC, less the total of projects that were in there. Because when you look at that document you just got, that total for year one, it includes Tolar, is, is one of the schools that's included there. So that has been taken out. So that means the additional funding that we need to complete that year one, those year one projects, based on the amount of money that we receive from the county currently, plus the continuation that is in the, is in the county manager's budget, we would need one point, two million dollars, one million two hundred and seventy-five thousand one sixty-six.
Okay, that's pretty simple, isn't it?
Yes, yes. So, and then the other item is the activity bus.
Are we getting tires this year?
We did the whole bus.
This is the whole bus. And I mean, you can see I've got some information about it, but you know, the, the newest full-size bus that we have is eight years old and the oldest is twenty-four years old. And the mileage of all the full-size, because we have full-size and mini buses, the full-size buses, all of the full-size buses have over a hundred thousand miles. And the state, there is not a requirement, not a state requirement that I know of as far as replacement of activity buses, but there, there is a law that guides yellow buses, the replacement of yellow buses. And that law is based on, on, is replacement at twenty years or two hundred and fifty thousand miles, whichever comes first, with a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand miles. So based on that state replacement cycle, we would have two activity buses available for replacement. And included in the full budget document will be a listing of all our activity buses with the, with the year and the mileage associated with it. So just as support for the funding for an activity bus.
Ms. Day, and I just, again, learning here, we got all these yellow buses and you cannot use a yellow bus to take a baseball team to a game? Why not? I mean, this just seems foolish.
State law, state law.
Why not? I mean, if, if we got, we got all these yellow buses sitting around, once they take the kids home, most of the games aren't till five or six, why can't we use yellow buses?
The state pays for the yellow buses and the state law says you can only use them.
The state pays for the yellow buses, and the state law says you can only use them to get to the front school.
That question is been asked a lot, and the answer is always the same.
The state also ensures that.
Right.
So, the state's not wanting to pay for that activity?
Welcome to the board.
One other question I have about the TOLA property. If we decide to sell it, how long would it take for an alternative to work through that process?
So, the first thing would be to declare it surplus, which doesn't take any, I mean, you do it at the next meeting. And then you offer it to the commissioners. And then, assuming they don't own it, I don't know, you could direct the superintendent to sell it. And that would generally, and then as far as the actual real estate transactions, especially considering we may start to have multiple, I think I would associate with a local real estate lawyer who does that, you know, to do closings. But as far as the board, what the board would have to do, I mean, you could do it at the next meeting.
And the reason I ask is because, you know, I've, okay, there's people talking to me about, or say that you guys don't really have a clear type of this school. And they go through this process about it.
We checked that, didn't we?
When it was so forceful. Of course, people out of the community don't know all that.
I'll have, yeah, I'll have to double-check because we also had that question with Mary Potter, and there was a lot of old deeds we were going through. But my recollection is that we got some copies of the documentation on TOLA because that community member had come up here with some claims, but that it was not restricted in the board design.
Yes, ma'am. Before Mr. Peace spoke, I was sitting here saying, when I looked at the document, it says with TOLA, I was concerned because it seems as if we were slow-rolling the process. Based on Mr. Peace's question, and since we made this decision in 2018, what has been happening with Joe TOLA since? This is basically made. What has happened since we made this decision? Am I hearing nothing?
You haven't made a motion to anything?
Yeah, we just decided to close the school. We didn't say to do anything with the property.
Can we make a motion tonight to declare it surplus?
It wasn't on the notice, so, but you could do it at the main meeting.
Have we gotten our appraisal yet? Were we waiting for that?
Not on TOLA. You were waiting for appraisal on annex.
We were waiting for it.
We were waiting for appraisal on TOLA.
You gave me direction.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have moved forward, and I have contracted with a company. And they told me it would take about three to four weeks, and it's going to cost $4,500 to get the appraisal.
But we still need to declare it surplus.
But that's not holding up the appraisal. The appraisal's moving forward.
Right, because you can, you can, you can go ahead and, as in one motion, or it'll be a resolution which I'll draft, declare it surplus, and direct superintendent to offer to the commissioners, but also say, if the commissioners don't want it, go ahead and sell it in using this method. And then she can go through those steps. And an appraisal costs some money, but, I mean, it's just, it's not a property that you know what it's worth. It's an unusual property, I think.
Yeah, that's what they did tell me, that it was going to be a fair price.
Yeah, to know what a fair price is. And then, assuming the commissioners don't want it, and you don't negotiate with another, you know, municipality or something, you would probably do it through an upset bid, where you advertise it, somebody makes you an offer, and then you publish the offer and say, does anybody want to beat this offer? And you go through that as many times as you get offers.
What do we do if a group that wants to go to charter school there wants to buy it?
It would go through the same, it would go through the same process as far as then you put it out, see if anybody could beat their offer.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, based on what I'm hearing, and I think I've mentioned all of the regular meetings, have we declared an annex surplus? That's the case.
I brought it to the meeting, but you decided to wait until you knew the negotiations with the commissioners.
We talked about it in the board's meeting, with Dr. Hula and his home, and we were waiting for that appraisal to come back to actually go through that process.
Because that's one where the county is actually interested.
Well, so is. I mean, there may be others that are interested, too, so we would have to go through that very carefully.
You can declare it surplus, they're just, you know.
The point is, expediting the vestiture of those properties, we're sitting here looking at budgets where we need funding for, and that could be sources of funds. And we have basically done nothing to try and procure funds that we need to support the public school system.
I think, I think we have done something, and that is the appraisals.
They haven't been done yet. We're waiting for them. And we haven't even mentioned the house next to South Graham by us. What's the status of that?
So, that was, we were going to research the deed and the will in which it was given to us because we believed, we had reason to believe that there was some stipulation about how it was to be used.
Okay, well, I think that it's important that we move on this as quickly as we can and bring back to us as quickly as you can. And frankly, if we need to have a special meeting to push this along, but we need to do that.
Well, the process of declaring something surplus is not a problem. It's determining the value of some of these properties that does take a little time so that you know if you're getting a profit.
So, just to be clear, appraisals are underway for the annex and Joe TOLA.
We expect to have the appraisal for the annex tomorrow. That's what the appraisal, the appraisal for TOLA.
And so, if we got the one on the annex, do we still need to declare it surplus?
Yes, sir.
The board's in surplus, I mean, to say that.
Yeah, okay. And the question, we have a meeting on Friday, and then we have a regular meeting, which agenda?
I mean, let me just say, it was something, it is something that I would want to be noticed properly. And so, doing it in a regular meeting is preferable from that standpoint.
It's the following.
That won't slow anything down.
Okay, all right. Good to know.
Thank you.
Would it be feasible, Stan, once we get that appraisal, can we go ahead and make that public to the county commissioners and see whether they, you could bring us an offer back to the board meeting?
Sure.
That's the pleasure.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think that's what should happen, is that we should find out what they're willing to pay.
Okay, let's move on.
So, I think Ms. Day and I heard you out and clear about which one of these you wanted us to act on for the budget. May I just see, nod of head, make sure we're, we read the comments and such, right? I think we're clear. Anything else, Ms. Day?
Great. Good work.
Thank you, everyone. We're getting there.
You'll be here brilliant, so you'll get it in about four years. Okay, good. All right, well, let's wrap up these other things, and we'll be through.
We've put in your folders this evening, board members, the message that went forth as the result of our last meeting regarding the May 1 public education rally. Dr. Lindgren, would you like to give us just a brief update?
May we free one, back one item?
Yes.
On the agenda?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes.
I don't want to overlook this. This is an action item.
Very, very good.
Well, let's go ahead and do this since we got it.
Because this is just information.
And so, we've...
Nothing new has come about. What I can tell you is that Durham Public Schools, Franklin County Schools, Advanced County Schools will be out on May 1st. Warren County, Percy County, and our district are in. So, those are just the surrounding counties. That is a bit of an update of where we stay with that. I've received no emails. I don't believe our executive team has received anything regarding the decision we made to honor the 60 some who submitted on time.
I got chewed out yesterday for messing up P. Rice Hall.
It's okay. We may need to know. But really, we don't mind knowing that you hear something because, again, this is one of those things. We tried to act sooner rather than later. And if we're going to have a turn of bids, you know, don't hesitate to let us know.
We need to turn to the bids.
We don't know what folks may do.
Do you have the subs required to...
So, I have an update. As of this afternoon, since we issued the deadline, we had three additional requests come in, and that was over a week and a half ago. So, our plan is, based on availability of subs, those may be denied. Okay? Of all the requests that were made before the deadline, we have less than 10 that have not yet been filled by a sub. Okay? So, we're working to do that. One thing that is unique about the sub system is that many substitutes only want to substitute at a particular school. So, everywhere seems, everywhere seems to just be one or two foes, except Butner Stent Middle School, for some reason, is a little unique. And they have a potential challenge, as it stands right now, with five, they need five substitutes.
The principal mentioned that this morning at the ambassador meeting. And so, she's already begun coming up with alternate plans, but she's the one with the issue trying to...
So, the question is, if she, and I understand she's looking into alternate plans, but if you don't get those five substitutes, I mean, do we, is, do we leave it up to the principal, too?
No, I don't know. We always come to the rescue, even if that means I go over. And we all take shifts or turns to make sure classes are covered. We will honor what we put out there.
Keep going.
Absolutely. All right, let me go back to the board meeting at the eighth bid for the HVAC at South Graham and JF Webb. This is an action item this evening, gentlemen. Dr. Lindgren, can you talk to this, please?
Yes, ma'am. So, this basically is a request for the board to approve a alternate bid to the base bid process on the HVAC projects at JF Webb and South Graham. We are, in our bid process, we have a preferred brand that we want to use with some of the equipment. And it's Aon, A-A-O-N. These are the giant air handling units that go on the roof that dehumidify the air. And so, because it's a preferred brand, then the statute requires that the board provide, that the board approve that as an alternate bid in the process. And so, Rod Malone, even his colleague, provided me the statute, and I highlighted that portion below. And so, I just said, we need a motion from the board to approve this as an alternate bid, that we include a preferred brand in the bid process.
And part of the reason for that is speed of availability.
Yes, ma'am.
That we have reason to believe that this manufacturer can get them ready for us in time to get it done this summer.
Let's get a motion on second floor, then we can do it.
Make a motion, second.
Second, Mr. Peace. All right, on the floor, Mr. Mannes.
So, what is the cost with the preferred brand? Is it the same?
Well, we don't know yet because the bid hasn't come in. So, it'll be, we'll ask people to give us a bid for whatever brand they think is best, and then give us a bid only using this brand. And so, then we'll assess the bids.
So, then what are we approving? If we say A-A-O-N, I thought that meant you're approving the preferred brand?
You are approving the administration to ask for bids using that brand. And the reason that that's required is to, it's a practice, it's, the legislature put this to make it harder to specify brands in public bids so that you couldn't use that to like, to eliminate certain bidders that use different brands. In other words, you couldn't put out a bid that says, we only want to use this one brand, knowing that only one contractor has that. So, that's why it has to come to the board if you want to do that. And the reason that our folks want to do it is because that manufacturer has indicated that they can have it ready in time.
But you still haven't answered the question about cost. When do we find out about, if we're going to approve this, when do we find out whether or not the A-A-O-N is going to cost three times more than one brand?
You're not approving anything, any costs at this point. You're simply approving for them to ask the bidders to give a bid on that brand. Then you will approve the bids later.
And we hope to open, well, we will open bids on Monday. The first bid opening was scheduled for this past Monday, but we only had two bids. It's an official sealed process, so we could not open them. And we had read advertised, and now the statute will allow us, if we have less than three, to open them up and proceed.
Do we have estimates on the cost of this equipment?
We couldn't open the bid. You can't open it.
If we're asking for this, somebody should have some clue about what an A-A-O-N costs, if we're asking for those. So, I mean, if you open up the Sears and Roebuck catalog, how much does it cost in there? You know? That's all I'm asking. I'm not trying to nail it down, but ballpark. An engineer had to recommend this, I would imagine, so how much are we talking about?
So, the engineers estimated the total cost for these two projects would be right at about 4.4 million for the two of them. And this is, again, South Graham and JF Webb.
And this is the same equipment you've used?
At Butler Middle and Crete, excuse me, Butler Elementary and Crete.
So, it's not, do we know Aon to be more expensive than other?
No, this is, the reason this came about is because of the turnaround time in ordering the equipment. I will say, I think I mentioned this at a previous meeting, too. Included in this bid process is another alternate to have air conditioning installed in the gyms at both high schools. And this is something that we dearly need to do. And again, I don't know a cost associated. I'm hoping that the 15 million dollars will cover, you know, these bids will come in, and we will have enough money left over from the 15 million to move forward with both of these projects and the alternate bids for the gymnasiums, cooling those gyms, because right now they're not conditioned at all. But I just, I want to put that out there.
You just mentioned Butler, Butler Stent Elementary School.
Yes, sir.
When you and I were here for the February work session, and we looked at the HVAC room, you and I both noticed a lot of shoddy workmanship. Has that been corrected, and is that bidder going to be one of the ones that we're looking at?
So, that was actually not part of the major work. That room was done prior to that. And those couplings and things, they have been looked at by Sam, and he's working with the contractor that did that work. So, that was not related, Piedmont, who was awarded those bids, did not do that work.
Okay, but that is, that is going to be corrected, that copper and stainless and all?
Copper and galvanized, it's got to be fixed.
One more question, Mr. Chair. I understand the ballpark figure is about the same as was with Butler and Crete. And I thought I heard about 4.2 million or 4 million. So, now, if it's going to be, if that was 4 million, and if we're talking about 4 million for Webb and South Graham, now we're at eight, and you're talking about preferred, and which we understand there's a need there to have the gymnasium air conditioning. What are we talking about for the remainder of the school district out of the 15 million? Because we're saying we're talking about eight right there before we do anything with the gyms.
So, I have a presentation I shared with you all about maybe two months ago that outlined the balance of those figures. I can pull that up. I can go to search for it and pull it up.
Maybe you could get together with Mr. Mannes and go through that.
So, of the 15, about five was earmarked for roof, 15 for HVAC, excuse me, 10, thank you, five to 10. So, of the five for roofing, I think we have about maybe 800,000 left for phase three. Of the 10 million, based on preliminary estimates, Mr. Mannes? Of the 10 million, based on preliminary estimates, Mr. Madsen, it's less than a million that we would have left over.
You mean after you do?
After we do that and after we do.
So that's what you would have right now to pursue air conditioning the gymnasiums? Okay.
Okay, good. So we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our final topic for the evening is a facilities update. We will have a general update, Stovall Shop parking lot, B C H S roofing, and then the Crete more annex. We sort of cagered that all ready to present an additional.
So as far as general, I think we've, you know, we've hit on the topics that that I had originally included under this bullet for tonight. I just wanted to remind folks that the master facilities plan, you know, as we make any amendment to that, I will bring you a hard copy as we did tonight, and if you can just stick that back in your book and rip the old page out. And I've tried to make a notation of, you know, when the change was made at the bottom of the sheet. That's a living document. We intend for it to change, and we will provide updates as that goes along. But the Stovall Shop parking lot, just to let you know where we are with that, we have hot we've hired, we put out an RFQ, we hired an engineer, okay? We've been working closely with them. They came up with four sort of preliminary designs, rough designs about what to do at the school. And after working with, you know, our team, maintenance, transportation, and a school committee, school-based committee, including principals and parents and teachers, getting lots of input, we narrowed it down to one preferred plan of the four. And the good news is that actually turned out to be the cheaper version of the four. In addition, we were able to locate a DOT report that was done in 2004, 15 years ago. And I think I forwarded that to you guys in an email. And it was actually very reassuring to see that that plan done 15 years ago is nearly mirrors what we're trying to do now. And with regard to the amount of queue waiting lines that are needed and the number of parking spaces and even similarity of how it would be located on the property. So we, right now, from the engineer, have some rough estimates that it could cost anywhere from $350,000 plus, okay, up to $400,000. You know, he's got contingency in there, and the price of asphalt apparently is a is a commodity that fluctuates a lot, so on and so forth. About half that cost is just asphalt, about 200 grand just for, you know, the raw product. So our timeline is that we would like to get this out for bid in mid-May so that we can honor a timeline that if the board approved, we could get the project done in time for the start of school. The only other thing that I have dedicated any funds towards other than the engineer is we're contracting with a boring company to do some soil samples, some initial soil samples, where they'll drill in out there to make sure that there's not like a sinkhole or a big soft deposit of clay or sand or something like that. And those need to be done now as parts of the in the folks who do the bidding will have assurances that the soil is sufficient to do the work. Also, we've we've spoken with the fire marshal, the planning department is on board, and we have some initial engineered drawings that have been done so that the contractors who've bid on this will know exactly what the specifications are for the project. So that's where we stand now.
So what what does the board need to do at this point?
I'm just providing information to you. I know there's been a lot of concerns about how we would pay for this, you know, and what funds we would use. And, you know, I met with Mr. Rivers, man, to talk about it. I think I may have spoken with another board member about it informally. We shared some emails, but, you know, this this would come from capital outlet. And, you know, the ultimate source of the money, you know, all of the money for capital outlet goes in that one large pot, right? So whether this would be the projects that we defer later on, other projects that we have ready to do now, we would defer some in order to do this, whether we would use funds that we might receive from the sale of any property, such as the annex or, you know, what have you, this later, this this next budget year, the 1920 year, we could use that money. We could also consider the use of fund balance, one-time money to do this project. I think I think there's general consensus that the project needs to be done and that it's an extremely unsafe situation we have over there right now.
Okay, so you're you're giving us an update, and at some point we'll need to make need to take action, correct?
Yes, sir. And I think that point will come once you have bids and you can see how much the project's going to cost, and you can tell me, yes, we're going to do it, or no, we're not.
And you'll get us that information early enough that if we decide to do it, it could be done by the time school opens next term?
Yes, sir.
So how excuse me, how soon would you need to have the drilling done?
So I've already moved forward with that.
The next one get done.
It's seven it's a $7,500 contract that I've moved forward with to get the boarding done, yes, sir. And that should happen in the next two weeks.
Okay. All right. Next item.
Yes, ma'am. So and even I made it first, you want some on this, but we've entered into a tolling agreement with the with Boomerang, so that that is set. And we basically are proceeding with the lawsuit. All of the the parties involved came out, they did a site visit, and they looked, and they made a bunch of notes. And I think they are still sort of deciding whether or not they want to try to fix it or they want to be made to fix it. And Rod has, I think Rod Malone has been communicating with them, rather, it's gotten more and more aggressive.
I was going to say, you were about to say aggressive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he's, you know, we're turning up the heat right now, so to speak, but it's still leaking. We just did a report. We did we put in some more work orders for the leaks just last week when we held that rain. So.
Now that if they don't do it, they either they do it, and we're going to send their name up to every school system in the state saying, don't use them, they're terrible. Mr. Madsen.
What so what are we waiting for? I mean, it's supposed to rain tomorrow. So what are we waiting for as far as getting this resolved?
We're not waiting for anything. We're working on it. I mean, we should be ready to file any day now. They just didn't want to, you know, do too much work on it until you approved it, which you did.
This simply update.
Yeah, we're not we're not paused for any reason.
So, you know, I think I heard a board member mention, does the Board of Education pay for a roof now with the expectations of getting reimbursed, or do we continue to wait until some decision is rendered? I I don't know the answer to that, but I think that is something that we need to.
Or do they keep keep patching?
That's exactly right.
I mean, it's I the answer to that is, I hope that we're not at that point today. And the staff will have to tell us if it becomes emergency level, but we're not we're not dragging our feet. I mean, we're moving forward, and it would not be ideal for you to go ahead and replace it without forcing them to replace it for you, but if it gets to be an emergency, then we will.
And I appreciate that, Attorney General. This has been leaking for how long now?
I'm sure since they put it on.
So my point is, when do we expect to have it fixed?
I can't answer that. I mean, the people who need to fix it are refusing to fix it, and we have to fight about it.
So if you if you are ready to file a lawsuit, tell me about the process. Is that going to, you know, is that a 90-day, 120-day, or a 360-day process?
Well, it depends on whether it leads to a settlement or not. I mean, that's most of the time you don't go to a trial. A trial would be months away, but that is rarely the outcome. So our hope is that they would that that would force them, perhaps along with their insurance company, to agree to fix it.
Didn't you explain to us in a previous meeting like that, this whole thing, you have to go through the booths, and you have to go back and forth, and they have to understand that we mean business, and if we don't mean business, that you're going to whatever. And so you're talking now, the next step is to file a lawsuit. You're done playing games.
Correct.
And get away.
No, you're.
And and so that's where we are. That's what we were told, is that correct?
That's correct. So and you said, go ahead and file it, and we're going to file it. And I haven't checked today. I mean, maybe I filed it today. I just haven't had a chance to talk to them. But, you know, our hope is that that will force some movement.
And if we were to fix it, that would then get them off the hook, would?
No, but it would make it more complicated, so.
Okay, anything else?
That's it. We've already talked about the annex. And again, as soon as I get that number back, I'll share it with you.
All right, anything else?
Can you tell us what the April 30th date gives them up?
Absolutely. My apologies, I just noticed that you got us parent university. We this year began lunch and learns to share with community information, and we now have parent universities. And this is a night for parents to come out. We want to put resources at the fingertips of parents. And so that will be held at the Expo Center, 530.
Right here.
Wait a minute, this is the first year. Mr. Keon Bonus is our parent liaison who's organizing that. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? We meet on the 29th with the final.
That's right. I'll see you Monday.
Okay.
Ms. Day and I are ready to rock and roll. Thank you for all of your input.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Six. Second. You get those all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.